I suppose hearings that are on schedule for our consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item, item number 16, is a public hearing item. It requests that the Board conduct the first and only public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending the county's closed basins and standard to reduce the likelihood of downstream adverse impact from stormwater facilities. Commissioners, we have no speakers on this item. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there a recommendation?
We are recommending option one.
We have a motion for option one by Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
No speakers, all in favor of the motion? You say aye. Oppose, it passes unanimously. Our next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 17, Commissioners, is a public hearing that requests that you conduct your second and final public hearing to reinstate and amend the Park Place Development Agreement to extend the termination date from January 24, 2022, to January 24, 2042. We're happy to answer any questions. We're recommending option one. We have no speakers on this item.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Welch, made by Vice Chairman. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Please say aye. It passes unanimously. Our next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number 18 is the first and only public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance repealing Chapter 11, Article 8 of the Leon County Code of Laws relating to solicitation on public streets. It's my understanding there are no speakers on this agenda item. We recommend approval.
Okay. Vice Chairman, his move, is there a second? Commissioner Cummings has seconded that motion. Hear none, no other comments. All in favor, please say aye. Passes unanimously. We are now on item, what, 13.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We're back on your general business agenda. And item number 13, this item seeks the Board's ratifications of the actions taken at the January 24th annual retreat. Commissioners, great retreat. We're recommending option one. We have no speakers on this item.
Is there a good motion on option one? That we have a motion by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. What I like to do is that last week I took Chairman's privilege to extend a formal letter of commendation to our county administrator for the outstanding completion of the five-year plan which was presented at our retreat. Tonight, we have our goals for the next multiple years, and it's so stimulating, I wanted to afford each commissioner to look through. If you look through, there were some add-ons that we did under the economy. I see that we've included those. Under environment, we've included that. Commissioners, I just want to make sure that you're satisfied with what we asked staff to bring back, that you completely hold with respect to what we have before. So any comments that you may have? Commissioner Minor, are you good?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the Commissioners for accommodating me during the annual retreat. As you know, I was during quarantine for me and my family, so I couldn't be there in person, so I had to participate remotely, but I thought it was a really helpful meeting. Want to thank my colleagues for supporting a couple of different things that were top of mind for me, among others, but one was the food insecurity initiative that we've got, where we actually work with Second Harvest and the city of Tallahassee to drill down to the neighborhood block group level, look at the number of meals missed, the food insecurity in those neighborhoods, and then work with the city and Second Harvest to address those issues, to identify specifically for those neighborhoods what is causing food insecurity, and then working with those partners and the neighbors to address those issues. That's a huge thing. We haven't really gotten much coverage in the media about it, but this is us using data to drill down to specific neighborhoods and doing something about it, and then measuring progress as time goes by. And then also want to thank the Commission for supporting our efforts on the North Monroe Task Force recommendations. We basically approved all of those wholesale from the Task Force, and we'll be spending time throughout this strategic planning five-year period to track those results. So I want to thank everyone here, as well as the North Monroe Task Force, the members for working so hard on that, and of course, our county staff who assisted them. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Dozier, I don't think that within the lexicon of our county commission we would ever lose the word "drill down" that you have just indelibly imprinted upon our thoughts of "drill down," any drilling you like to do.
Always keeping us on our toes, Mr. Chair. No, sir, I think this is a good document. I appreciate, hope you two don't mind, but Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Cummings, thank you. That's perseverance right there, and I'm glad we're able to accommodate everyone, whether we're in person or not. So I thought we had a good discussion. The only question I had, Mr. Chair, was actually about one of the two administrative items. I just want to make sure, Mr. County Administrator, the second agenda item, evaluating opportunities to engage young people in workforce and in the community, including the review of programs such as Tempo. This was kind of a conversation that evolved from some of our, I think it was the citizens' ideas and really trying to draw ideas from the youth specifically and look for some creative ways to maybe engage them. And then the Vice Chair brought in, you know, wanting to look at Tempo and workforce. I just, I think both are good, support both, but I want to make sure we've got some clarity because that engaging the ideas, I've just thought about that a little more, want to make sure we're going to be able to talk about it. You're nodding vigorously, so I assume that's a yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, that is all, and did we, we already had a motion on this?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thought so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Welch.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to appear telephonically, remotely during the retreat. I didn't want to miss it because being a fairly new Commissioner, this was my first experience in helping to draft the five-year plan, strategic plan. So I appreciate that and appreciate the vote on the input as far as coordination and cooperation with the Children's Services Council as one of the initiatives. But I'd like to, Mr. Chair, if I may allow, I mean, request rather, a proposed initiative to be added to the proposed initiatives under Quality of Life. And after our discussion about the status of our boys and men and agreeing to embrace that initiative as proposed by the Sheriff and also, Mr. Chair, just recognizing that here, even if we look at 2022, many of our young people have lost their lives through gun violence, but if you look at the reports, a lot of those activities involved drug sales and drug deals. So I'd like to recommend or propose a strategic initiative that would indicate that we would support law enforcement and program initiatives of our community partners to address the impact of drug-related crimes in our community.
Ms. Vice Chair, are you open to that? Is there room in your motion to augment as a strategic initiative? What Commissioner Cummings has just suggested, that is to the Boys and Men Initiative and that measures of what we just voted on moments ago might also be added under Quality of Life?
Yes, I'm glad that Commissioner Cummings brought that up because pardon, that's one thing I was going to talk about, so yes, I most definitely would do that. Thank you, thank you for the amendment.
Seconder of the motion, okay with that? Very good, thank you. All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson?
I have no additional comments at this time.
Okay, Ms. Vice Chairman.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair, thank you.
I want to reflect that under the economy, there was a target that our NWSBE, that this number would increase over the next five years to 30%. And Vice Chairman made a challenge, a bold goal, and that was pretty bold. And I want to note that we call for an increase of the number of fully electric vehicles in the county's fleet by 500%, another one of our bold goals. And all of the initiatives that we have weighed in on, we want the community to know that we have been placing the results of 94% of our last five-year strategic plan has been actually implemented, and there are 4% of those remaining tasks that are underway and still in effect. I want also to note that the Saks Communications Group did a poll, we did a community survey, and I'm very pleased to report on our report cards that 94% of those surveyed in Leon County rated the quality of service provided by Leon County government as positive. And that's the huge and big takeaway, that is a reflection of our stewardship of resources that citizens yield to us and the confidence that has been reposed in us as a governing body. It pleases me to say that 94% rated the quality of services provided by Leon County government as positive. And so certainly to Mr. Administrator, you, to Ms. Olsteen, our outstanding staff, you certainly deserve some of that shine, and we're not trying to hog it all on this side. We will take it and take a bow, but we know that there's enough shine to illuminate all of us, and we are so grateful for your efforts. Hearing no other comments, we have a tremendous 22 through 26 strategic plan, and these are the things that we purposed to be about, to do in the interest of our community over the next five years. All those in favor of the motion by Vice Chair, please say aye. It passes unanimously. We thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Item number 14 presents findings and recommendations. As I've provided you this information in your briefings, Commissioners of MGT's Consulting Groups Building Plan Review and Inspection User Fee Study, that's a mouthful, and presents the adoption of revised building plans, review and inspection fee resolutions with an effective date of June 1. The fee study Commissioners recommend and a proposed fee resolution, again, will provide improved transparency, further simplify the process of calculating building and permit fees, and ensure our building plans, review and inspection division remains, maintains an appropriate fund balance in accordance with Florida statutes. Commissioners, again, this fee study has received tremendous support from our users, from the development community. It represents really good work from Barry Wilcox and Scott Brockmire and Justin Poole, who are on deck. They are happy, Commissioners, to provide a brief presentation, or if it's the will of the Board, just simply answer any questions that you might have. We do not have any speakers on this item, Commissioners, and again, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll hand it back to you.
Commissioner Dozier, is there any reason that we should not adopt this fee schedule? Is there any reason that we should, you know, have pause? We trust your eyes.
Well, I think any of us who heard Barry's comment at the retreat, that you get applause at the Tallahassee Builders Association meeting, their government relations meeting, you should take comfort in that. Those folks are very much engaged, and Barry, your staff, counterparts of the city, have been attending those meetings for years. So more than anything I could do looking at this item, that is the endorsement that I was looking for, and the fact that we have not gotten any emails concerned about this fee structure. I mean, this is significant. County Administrator, I think you said it in the briefing, this has been a hugely controversial item when it has come up in the past, correct?
Correct.
This is not only a good work product, a good idea, but I have to compliment, Mr. County Administrator, you, your staff, the way this was handled and how much you have engaged the building and development community, the stakeholders in this. I've said it before, we got to have a building permit, we got to make sure everybody's going to build a safe house, safe, you know, office building, whatever that might be, but we got to make it easy and efficient as much as possible. And you all are doing a great job. So, Ms. Chair, I went on a little bit more, but I would be very, very happy to make a motion for option one.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Dozier, seconded by the Vice Chair.
And I only have one last comment, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to save it for the record because all of that is county-side, but I did ask the County Administrator one question, and I believe things have gotten better. I just would like to look at this. There are some times where city and county are intersecting. For example, those folks who are in the unincorporated area, working with our department, and yet they are in city utilities. And some of those questions have come up in the past at some TBA meetings. I believe, as I said, they've been resolved, but you were going to follow up, and I wanted to mention it here, Mr. County Administrator, because it may be helpful for my colleagues, for the full Board, to hear that if anyone else is going to meet with TBA or any of the other industry groups. Sound good? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Other comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, option one, please say aye. It passes unanimously. Our next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Barry. I see your team is ready to, you know, rock and roll. Thank you, guys.
Agenda item number 15 is the opioid litigation status report in consideration of the Opioid Litigation Endo Health Solutions, Inc., and Endo Pharmaceuticals, Inc., settlement proposal and participation. As the Board knows, the county has been involved in opioid-related litigation since 2018. The Board previously approved the MOU with the state last year in September to provide for the allocation and use of opioid settlement proceeds. And what you have before you this evening is consideration of the settlement agreement and settlement proposal and participation agreement for settlement with these two particular entities. Staff and outside council do recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Have we arrived at any specific numbers in partitioning, or is this not a number of resolution?
There are some rough allocations that have been floated, but the next step after this would be for the companies to determine whether or not there's sufficient participation by all of the local government entities to move forward with the proposed settlement. So we don't really have numbers yet. Anything that we get in the allocation for Leon County and Tallahassee will be based on the allocation structure that the Board agreed to in the MOU last year, keeping in mind that because we have a population, it's close, but of less than 300,000 people, we will not get a direct allocation. All of that money will go to the managing entity for this region, and then we will, like all the other counties in the region, be seeking that funding directly from the
That's what happened when you was small. Is there a motion that we?
Move options one and two.
All right, we have a motion for options one and two, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of option one and two, please say aye. Amen. All right, we're done. Thank you so much. Are we at the end now, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that brings us to citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. We have three speakers. The first one, Reverend David Hall.
Pass the hall if you would state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Reverend David Hall, 12700 McKissicki Road, Tallahassee, Florida. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here this afternoon because our community are in crisis, simply because CenturyLink, CenturyLink got a bad name. We've been dealing with this for over two or three years. It is so bad that each week, we got to call CenturyLink Repair to come out and repair your service. The Wi-Fi is so bad, you can't even use your phone, your printer, or anything, and something needs to be done, not next year, but this year. I was on a webinar today. Right in the middle of my webinar, I got cut off and disconnected. The structure, the infrastructure that we are working on, that infrastructure in McKissicki is over 25 years old. And when I talk to a tech, they don't come by your house, they go straight to the little junction box, or whatever you might want to call it. It's not big as your tube shed, and something needs to be done. I've been talking to a gentleman out of Destin, name, I can't think of his name right now, and he's saying, he's stating that nothing can be done, but I invite each and every one of you all to come out to McKissicki and try to use your phone. And when it rain, your phone line go dead, it start cracking, and you can't do anything. And this what really got me. If you purchase a home and bring it out, a builder home in McKissicki, there are no spaces that you can hook your phone up in because there's no spaces left. You either got to go to HughesNet or another provider because CenturyLink don't have no spaces. And I call this discrimination. I'm here because we are tired. We are tired fighting CenturyLink. Either they need to get their material and get out of Tallahassee or wherever they want to go, but CenturyLink in McKissicki got a bad name. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Hall. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. Reverend Hall actually gave me a call on this. This is something that he's actually talked to me about multiple times throughout the year, throughout the years. What is the recourse here? I don't know if we have one from a county standpoint, Mr. Administrator. I'm thinking the PSC at the state level. What is the recourse here for him? As the services out there is pretty bad, I've been out there myself and experienced it. If there's any, what is the recourse, and what can we do to help him out?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Maddox, yeah, I've talked with you about this, and the District Commissioner has been really focused on this issue as well out there, and you know, there's nothing that we in Leon County hate to say more than the fact that there's not a lot that we can do. This is an area that, and I worked in local government prior to the legislature completely deregulating this industry, but they have completely deregulated this industry and done so in a way that the local governments have virtually no say in terms of what the industry does. That being said, and we're talking about existing industry, that being said, we're doing everything we can to try to promote and proliferate new, if you will, service areas and expand service through some of the new federal programs that are available to us, and we're actively engaged in those processes right now, including with a work group that OEV is staffing pursuant to the new federal legislation, where we are identifying ways to increase the reliability of the networks in areas that are underserved in our community. That's part of their focus, and certainly we'll be keeping the Board apprised of that. But in terms of the infrastructure that's on the ground and the providers that are doing business today, not a whole lot, Mr. Chairman, that we could do in that regard.
Well.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
You finish?
Yes.
Commissioners, I, these comments could have come from a citizen out of Woodville. It just happens to come from a citizen from McKissicki. It's the same in our outline areas. President Biden, I don't know if his bill back, somebody's earmarked for rural connections, connectivity. Congressman Al Lawson has talked about it, but I want to listen to our Commissioners, and I have a recommendation to make to our Board. Commissioner Welch, you didn't notice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hall, I appreciate you coming in. I can testify to it. I'm routinely at the ballpark out there with my kid, and you get no service. As the County Administrator said, I raised this to a strategic initiative on asking the county to, when they get the opportunities, to draw down federal money for rural broadband, all the way up Centerville Road, all the way to McKissicki, we've got problems. I wanted to suggest something to you that may or may not work, but as y'all know, Commissioner Ralph Thomas in Waculla County lives in a rural area, and I noticed that he just got Starlink service. If you're familiar with that, that's the satellites that Elon Musk has put into space, and you can see them sometimes, they're like one right after the other, they're in a perfect line. And that's meant to be a global Wi-Fi provider, literally through a system of hundreds of satellites, and he got that service in Waculla County, so maybe something you want to look into, and I think he gets pretty good speeds, much better than what he had before with whoever the provider is in Waculla County. But I understand your frustration, and I have talked to the County Administrator about it, we have elevated it to a strategic initiative, and whenever there's an opportunity to do anything, we will strike, I assure you.
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Reverend Hall, you should never have to come down to your county commission and ask about Wi-Fi service. That's just the bottom line, right? But as County Administrator said, others, and you've heard this, we are bound by a lot of, I mean, we've given away any authority to regulate this. But I will say, I've heard a slightly different tone starting in the last few weeks, and this doesn't mean that the rules have changed or anything like that, but I had a constituent on tram call, one side of the neighborhood has Comcast, and they won't run the wires to the other side of the neighborhood. And I've had a really good conversation with our rep, and I know that's not CenturyLink, but we've had these issues with all providers. but we've had these issues with all providers. And they did reference the Build Back Better, R for Dollars, others. Mr. County Administrator, a lot of conversation about OEV's stakeholders. And sort of, I mean, this is something, it's not going to help you tomorrow, on your Zoom meeting tomorrow or anything, and I hate that, but this is a slight shift in what we have heard before. So, I think this OEV work group, and particularly working regionally with other counties, staying in contact, is really critical. Making sure we get some of that funding, and it's applied in the right ways. This is really critical. But the other factor I was going to mention is, I happen to see an interesting Facebook post, MetroNet, we all know, you, you see the, you see the trucks, it's not coming into our rural part of the county, but it's in, inside the city. And someone just made a comment about competition. So I'm not, I've mentioned two companies, we've mentioned three tonight. This is why competition matters. If customers have choices, we tend to step up our game, no matter what company it is, coffee company, telephone, whatever it might be. And if, this is one of the biggest things, pushing for new providers, new access. The Starlink, Commissioner Welch, that you mentioned, Planning Council has engaged with some folks on that, looking at the options for the rural area. There's pros and cons, there's some costs there, but we do have a lot of folks engaging on that. So, just with those comments, Ms. County Administrator, I'm going to say that, it's my understanding the work group has met with, or invited, the companies. Some may have come in, some may haven't. I would suggest our very favorite state lobbyist also has a lot of work with Starlink and other companies, so he may be able to provide some information, or connect with some reps that could help folks learn a little bit more. And really pushing that coordination, I know you're already doing this, but with the additional funding, so we can fill in those gaps in the mapping, is, is critical. So, again, Reverend, we, it's not going to help you tonight, but we're all focused on this. Thank you.
Very good. Reverend Hall?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, right, our neighboring sister in Thomas County, I'm sorry, in Thomas County, they have already been allocated. Governor Kemp have all, has already allocated a certain amount of money for the infrastructure right in Thomas County. Already in place. Thomas County know exactly how much money they're going to get when the infra, infrastructure bill begin to be allocate funds to the different counties. So, my, my saying here tonight, why can't Leon County get on the stick and find out what's going to come down to Leon County?
You know, our governor don't like federal money. We ain't none of Governor Kemp.
I know. He trying to, he running around trying to get a, a voodoo doctor to be their health in, the, what I want to say? Become the, the surgeon general. And he around moving, what you call?
Yeah, we understand what you're saying. Now, let me indicate, Commissioners, any other comments reacting to? I think that, given the universality of the broadband issue, Highway 20, Woodville, Mikkasuki, outline areas, Commissioner Welch's home, I would like to nominate one of our at-large commissioners to fervently, on special assignment from our board, be empowered to be a nuisance in a known hands, to do the federal reach, or the state reach. And I would like to nominate board that either of them qualified, Commissioner Cummings as, as an attorney. But I want to nominate the vice chair, because he serves on the National Committee of NACO, and is a previous and past president of Florida Association Counties. And I just think that experience on all of this, and board, I, I think that this is not a district one problem, district folk. It's, it's, it's the county. And here, I think that one of our universal ambassadors ought to be, if they willing to accept, to represent our board and the support of our staff, to secure answers like this on broadband. Because truly, Build Back is stuck, but if it's unstuck, it still comes through Tallahassee and gets stuck. We may well need a lawsuit to get our pro-rata share for monies such as Medicaid, and monies that are refused to our communities. So, board members, hearing all that you've said, Mr. Hall, other members from my district, I think one of our, one of the two at-large, and our most decorated member up here, is Commissioner Maddox, our vice chair. And I would ask and nominate him on the assignment of broadband, and getting involved to get more answers, and dealing with these companies, and with the support of our staff. That would be my motion, as one approach.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification? I wasn't sure if you passed the gavel first. I'm making a motion, but second, we've already initiated the work group at OEV. My understanding is the staff's been having a lot of those conversations. I, I'm just, I'm just wondering, Mr. Administrator, you could comment on this, Mr. County Administrator, you could comment on this, but I'm wondering what else we could do, because we have our federal and state lobbyists, we have the task force, and they will be reporting back to us. So, Mr. County Administrator?
Hold on, before the administrator goes. What I'm saying is, I understand when staff is involved, and staff is this, and staff is that. I believe we need a commissioner of Leon County involved, who is sanctioned, endorsed by this board. And I'm not saying that staff doesn't get, but we need a commissioner anchored in this fight, in the interest of our community. Along, and supported by staff, but we need a designated general. We have seven of those here. We need one in this particular battle, because broadband will, in the future, affect the value of property. And property in Mikkasuki ain't going to be worth all that, if it ain't there. Little children don't want to go to the hotels if, if it ain't got Wi-Fi. So, it's in the sense of a commissioner's name and title, in association for this effort of Leon County, in all the myriad ways in which this fight needs to be fought. I believe that our board will advantage itself to, to sacrifice one of our names to, to just be a face of it, this broadband push. Those are just my, my limited thoughts, and I pass the gavel to the vice chairman.
With due respect, I mean, if the board wants to lean into this, that's fine. I, this is unusual for our board, to, I mean, to have it open-ended. We, we don't typically designate someone just to represent the board. I don't know what that may mean, you know, in process or anything like that, it's just unusual. So I'm just trying to wrap my mind around that. But I would say, on the other hand, we need all hands on deck. I'm learning a lot from Planning Council, I'm learning a lot from the individuals that I talked to in the private sector. I would encourage, I mean, I'm sure all of you are doing the same. You're going out, you know what it's like in Mikkasuki, you know, different areas. We're all hearing from different districts, or at-large, or hearing from a lot of folks. So, I think we got to glean as much information as possible and push it back, but any work with federal or state, we're going to have to coordinate through our staff. And that's the poor part that I'm just not quite sure how I'm wrapping my mind around having one designate, because it's just unusual for us. So I'll leave it for other specifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. There's a motion on the floor for a designate, at-large designate, to be the point person for our broadband discussions in the rural area. That motion is made by our chairman, Proctor. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Commissioner Cummings. If, if we do not move in this direction, I do know there's times that we've done this before, but if we not moving, if we do not move in this direction, I think it dead level worse. Just a, a workshop, as a update on, on what's going on with broadband in Leon County, and especially in the rural area, how we go about establishing that competition, as you talked about, Commissioner Dozier, and alleviating some of the problems that we have in the Woodville and Mikkasuki area, I think, I think that will be warranted. So, even if we don't move in this direction, I think maybe a workshop refresher, because I don't even know if our new commissioners have even, have set, have set through a workshop to get that much in detail about what's going on in broadband, and how we, the infrastructure, and how we partner with our, and not, you neither, Commissioner Minor. So, even if we don't move in that direction, I think that workshop is worthy. And maybe even out of that workshop, we talk about the appointment then, if we want to move in that direction. But, so, so maybe it's a two-step, maybe, maybe it's a workshop, doing that workshop, we talk about the best, best way to address the problem, whether it's appointee, or working with staff, or whether, you know, staff can handle it by themselves. So, that's, we can mix it up that way, too. I'm going to go to our chairman, and then I'm going to go to the administrator.
I'll yield to the administrator first.
Mr. Administrator?
It was just another option for the board to consider, given that this process that we're involved in is kind of in full swing. If the board would like, we could provide a status report to you, as a first step, and if the board would like to, after you've received that status report, to then schedule a workshop. Of course, it's all the board's prerogative, I just wanted to give you that additional option.
I, I don't think that's a bad idea either, because then that status report can be pulled and asked for workshop. Mr. Proctor, you are the maker of the motion.
Thank you very, very much. I wanted just to share so that, to allay any fears or uneasiness of Commissioner Dozier or any other commissioner, that this commission did appoint some years back, when we were facing 27 lawsuits from the Bradfordville community. And we designated a commissioner, even though the whole board was aware, we heard from people on and on, Commissioner Cliff Thel, who, was he our chairman at that time? I think he was the chair, was designated to sit down, to meet, to go through these lawsuits, to strive and seek a settlement. I'm not sure if County Attorney Olsteen would have approved that, but the board sent Cliff Thel to represent it in a special quagmire. We were in a quagmire. On another point, when they were talking about septic tanks, sewage for Killarne, Carolina Lakes, I believe, Commissioner Grippa, which was his district, but Commissioner Grippa met and represented our board. The falls chase issue, Commissioner Dozier, your district, a problem that existed for 32 years. Lots of engineers, lawyers, staff, whole bunch of folk, for 32 years. And this board designated Commissioner Bill Proctor to go and represent it. And today you have outdoor sports, and Walmart, and all of that. And this board did not designate for the special effort for the widening of Crawfordville Road, but a commissioner, Bill Proctor, took upon himself to self-designate, to secure federal support for the widening of Crawfordville Road, which, years later, Waukulla now, is widening 319. And the monies that were secured by Bill Proctor to widen Crawfordville Road all the way to the county line of Waukulla would meet the new expansion. But that money was hijacked by the MPO, half of it, and was put on 319 North Thomasville Road. So, efforts, there is precedent for what I'm saying, that when an issue such as a big piece of our county is not getting the services and the train of the future is being on board on Wi-Fi, and sometimes, there is one commission designated to deal with the complexities that our whole board is not dealing with. So I want to make sure board members that you are aware, that we have in previous occasions designated a specific member to get down and grungy, with whatever, had to get down and grungy. So I share that.
I'll tell you what, Commissioner Dozier make final comment, and then Commissioner Proctor, I want you to clarify your, your motion. Commissioner Dozier?
Thanks, Mr. Vice Chair, and I was going to say that designating an individual commissioner is certainly an issue that we could come back to. Those examples you listed, Mr. Chair, with respect, they all happened before 2010, when Commissioner Maddox and I joined this board, and I think there's a reason for that. Again, I don't think tonight is the night to really unpack that, but I have never been quite comfortable with that, and we have not done that in the last 11 years. And there is a reason. So, that is a separate conversation. I want to get back to the Reverend, and we, you know, focus on the Wi-Fi here. So, I, I respect your position, it's just something you and I have disagreed on over the years, that's it. And we agree on a lot, we disagree on some. So, that is, that's an issue that we could talk about. On the Wi-Fi, I think the status report from Mr. County Administrator that you recommended, and perhaps, there was a robust agenda item that helped let me know, I mean, the first time I ever really understood how the state does the mapping, and this, federal government does the mapping. If we could look at that agenda item, Ms. County Administrator, and update any reference to federal or state, new funding sources, anything like that, that might be a really big help to kind of lay the groundwork, the status report on the work group, and that agenda item, and then we could talk in March about designating someone, or holding a workshop, or what else we want to do. But I would like to see that update, and I think that's a good suggestion. So I can't support the motion at this time, but we want to get that back and talk about it in March. I do, I think that's good.
Commissioner Dozier, are you making a substitute motion, or are you going to just let the, the original motion?
Well, I don't know if we need a motion to get the status report, but just to make it formal.
Madam Attorney?
If the board wants to put something on the agenda, it would require a motion, and it would need to be unanimous, since this was not an agenda item.
And I'm not suggesting on the agenda right now. We can bring it back in March and decide to go to a workshop, decide to designate someone, we could do anything like that, so we can get this information.
Yes, thank you. On point to your, to your comment, also, if Commissioner Proctor's appointee motion is on the floor, it would need to be unanimous in order for it to be a formal action by the board as well, correct?
What Commissioner Dozier is contemplating would require an amendment to, or a substitute amendment, basically, at this point.
Yes.
Otherwise, there needs to be a vote on the motion that's currently on the floor.
I understand. But I said, if we, if we were taking up Commissioner Proctor's motion right now, it would need to be unanimous in order for it to pass, correct?
Correct, yes.
Commissioner Dozier, you have the floor. I just wanted that clarification, I'm sorry.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm, I'm done. I am content with, I can't support the motion at this time. But if we don't need a motion for an updated agenda item, and a status report as the county administrator has offered, I think we stick with that, we can all review it, we can discuss this in common time at our March meeting. That's what you were suggesting, Ms. County Administrator, correct?
That's exactly right. Just another option for the board to consider.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chairman, for my-
I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Minor, and then, I'm sorry, final, final, is our chairman, Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just to make sure I've got this correct, just to kind of maybe bring this back in for a landing. So, Commissioner Dozier has expressed her support, her, her lack of support for the motion on the floor. This motion on the floor right now, to appoint our vice chair as the representative on this topic, would need to be unanimous.
Yes.
So we know, we know this motion's going to fail. If, so, what I would do is, is, since we know this motion's not going to pass, I would offer a substitute motion, which will still need to be unanimous, that we bring this, this status report back as an agenda item for the next meeting.
Right.
At that meeting on March 8th, we will then have the ability to review that status report, have another discussion, and then figure out where we go from there.
And that's what I was asking, the county attorney, is that we would need that motion in order for it to come back? Yes. So, motion on the floor for a status report to come back on the 8th, and then discussion if needed, if need be, are pulled for an appointee, that motion is made by-
Exactly, it's a substitute motion.
Substitute motion made by Commissioner Minor, is there a second?
I will second, and-
Second about Commissioner Dozier?
With an amendment, would you include the updated agenda item, as mentioned before? We had a robust agenda item on broadband last year, and if the staff can just update that, we don't need a new one, but update it, include it with staff.
Yes, I would accept that.
As amended with Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Proctor, you have final?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I support the substitute motion.
Yes, sir.
It gives us there to lift up and to think about our need for- It gives us there to lift up and to think about our need for a commissioner, a general, to march through a very political issue. There's billions of dollars on this particular issue. It is so special to the future of our community, that when it comes back, I will again ask, and we won't need a, we won't need a unanimous on that right there, that we would consider a point person on a highly complex, very special issue that preachers is missing their meeting. He could have been talking to Jesus. Who he was talking to? God. And you get cut off. And we don't need for the pastor to get cut off when he's talking to God in the middle of a conversation. So-
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion on the floor is for a status report to come, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, would you mind, since you're going to support the substitute motion, would you remind rescinding your original motion?
Rescind.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for a status report to come back on our broadband issue. That status report will include our prior, will update, it would include updated information from our prior agenda item involving broadband. And there was one more caveat to it, was it, Commissioner Minor?
Two, yes.
Okay, that was it. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Reverend Hall, we're going to get this done for you. I know it's a tough issue. Everybody's working for you, but you know, our hands are kind of tied in a lot of ways here, but we're doing all I can, all we can to help you. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I hand the gap back to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Reverend Hall. We thank you. We want to be talking to the Lord and get cut off. You got to maintain that connection. All right, Mr. Chairman?
The next speaker, Gwendolyn Simmons.
Oh, she had the meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Reverend Simmons left?
Yes, she had the meeting.
Okay, Reverend Simmons is left.
Final speaker, Jeremy Block.
Mr. Block, please state your name and address, please.
Jeremy Block, 1109 East 6th Avenue in Tallahassee. I'm here to dovetail on the many discussions that took place this afternoon about violence in the community. And it's been discussed. I wish the sheriff was still here. I have some final notes for him. What I am proposing is a gun buyback program to be initiated by the county and/or city or in tandem. It's been successful in Gainesville this summer. It's been successful this fall in Boynton Beach, which are two communities that are similar in size and status to ours. And I'm very excited in pushing this issue, because I think it's a proactive move. It's not a reactive move. To the 26 gun incidences during January, that represented five fatalities. I've read the sheriff's dissertation, Anatomy of the Homicide. It is such a valuable document. I can't say that enough. There is so much stuff. A lot of people roll their eyes when the statistics start being shown, but goodness gracious, it makes perfect sense with the least little effort to get a real handle on it. So what I want to do is, I want to propose a gun buyback program that will take the following format. I've gone that far to align this in my head and my thought process. It's going to be a drive-through event. Unfortunately, we're very familiar with drive-through events. It's kind of like getting COVID testing. You won't get out of your car. If you have a weapon that you wish to turn in for compensation, the weapon will be in the trunk of the car. The officer will go around, open the trunk, examine the weapon, ensure that it's operable, because one of the things that Sheriff McNeil told me in passing a couple of weeks ago was, a couple of years ago, he tried this, and so many weapons that were turned in were inoperative, which kind of negates the whole plan. So in this case, we're going to have that caveat in there. Operational weapons only. If it turns out that it's okay, the officer checks it, they put it in a safe location, they come back, they tell the resident who's still in his car, you have a long rifle, here's a gift card for $500. You have a handgun, here's a gift card for $300. And those are all fluid. We can work with the number of dollars invested in this. But Boynton Beach in four hours got 156 weapons off the street. That's phenomenal. We're missing the boat if we don't get on board this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Block. Mr. Administrator, are there any calculable estimates of how many weapons are on in Leon County? How many? Would 156 move the needle?
I couldn't say at this point. Mr. Chairman?
I've never seen the date of how many guns are in our county. I never saw that. It's amazing. Thank you, Mr. Block. I would make the recommendation, are there commissioners who want to react to the recommendation from Mr. Block for a gun buyback? Commissioner Minor?
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Block, for coming to speak today, and thanks for calling me. You may have spoken with the other commissioners, too. I don't know. But thank you for that discussion. You know, what Mr. Block brings up with the successes in Boynton Beach and Gainesville, I think it's very promising. I do remember the gun buyback program that TPD did. I think it's when Sheriff McNeil was Chief McNeil. That's when the last buyback program took place that I remember. I do think it was kind of met with lukewarm success. But as you define it, I think it might have a lot of promise. What I'm hoping that this board might consider is maybe bringing an agenda item, working with the sheriff's office on this, as to the feasibility and possibility of something like this working. So that'd be my motion, is to bring back an agenda item at a time as soon as possible to discuss this as a policy item with Sheriff McNeil.
Okay. Mr. Block, you've hit a home run. I couldn't get a second in a motion that quick on nothing I've suggested all year. We have a motion, a second. Are there other comments? Here none, all in favor, please say aye. Okay, passes unanimously. Sir, that will be coming back to our board with our sheriff's input, and we'll see what happens. Thank you so much for your input. Great, great idea. All right. Other speakers? Okay. All right, commissioners, this concludes our speakers for the night. We want now to bring this plane in for a landing. We ask our county attorney, are there any comments at points that she needs to bring to us tonight?
I have nothing for the board.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'd asked that I provide a report to the board on the wastewater spill that occurred near Lake Jackson over the weekend. I'm happy to do that at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I did request it.
Absolutely. Well, commissioners, as you may have seen in media reports, one of the city's forced mains broke on Saturday, which caused a spill of about 190,000 gallons. This happens, commissioners, and there's a process that's outlined when this happens in state law that requires the city to report the incident to the state and to coordinate with FDEP and other agencies to initiate any cleanup, which DEP, Florida DEP, may require, and to also do appropriate public health warnings and advisories to the affected community. In this particular incident, commissioners, the leak originated from the city of Tallahassee pump station along McGuinness Arm, on McGuinness Arm Road. The spill impacted an adjacent stormwater treatment facility operated by the Northwest Florida Water Management District, which feeds into McGuinness Arm just south of Lake Jackson. City crews minimized the overflow and the impacts to surface water by using sandbags, pump trucks, and septic haulers until the repair was complete. The city initially recovered 325,000 gallons over the weekend. An additional 500,000 gallons was pumped yesterday, and the city is continuing to pump out water today. All of this recovered water is pumped into the city's sewer system, which is treated as regular wastewater. As required by state law, commissioners, the city notified FDEP and their state watch officer over the weekend, along with the Florida Department of Health and the Wastewater Management District. The city's working, they're taking water quality samples from McGuinness Arm, and will be pumping and monitoring water quality samples until they return to levels that were observed prior to the spill. The city expects these efforts to be complete by the end of this week. There are no elevated bacteria counts at this time, and no public health environmental hazard is expected. The city also notified citizens in the affected area on Monday. The city posted advisory signs at McGuinness Arm and left door hangers in the surrounding neighborhoods, which included the city's point of contact and their phone number. Again, should citizens have any questions on this issue, the city will provide a report on the incident to the county, and there will be no other obligations of the county related to the incident. We've asked the city to notify us when their cleanup efforts are complete and water quality samples are back to normal. And of course, I'll provide that information back to the board. With that, commissioners, that's my report. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Are there any questions about the spill, Commissioner Dozier?
Much go ahead. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. And Mr. County Administrator, thank you very, very much for reaching out to the city on this. And I drove out to McGuinness Arm this afternoon to see for myself, and it was just as you described. I mean, there's a stormwater facility there, a pond that basically feeds into the McGuinness Arm of Lake Jackson. And actually spoke to some of the folks that were working there, pumping the water out. They still have a couple of days to go before that pond is drained. They're going to go ahead and, you know, apply lime and basically treat that pond to protect it. So I want to really thank you as well, Mr. County Administrator, for answering the questions that I posed to you earlier today. I basically was very specific on what I think we needed to hear, in terms of what the health impacts are, environmental impacts, what the estimate for completion is, and what type of notification has been done for the neighbors that live in that area. Thank you for answering pretty much all of those questions. One thing I wanted to address with my colleagues here is, I'd like to get a sense for what type of process and procedure exists in the general sense when it comes to sewage spills. This particular one took place, it was on a city facility outside the city limits. It was an uncorporated part of the county. And I didn't know about it until I read about it in the paper. And it happened on Saturday. So what I'd like to do, if everyone would like to have a discussion about this, I think, listen, I'm not here to antagonize the city. This is not my purpose. The city is probably our most important partner. When we work well with them, we're better able to serve our constituents. So it's nothing about any of that. But we all have an obligation to ensure the health and safety of the people that live in this county, as well as protect our natural resources. And so I really appreciate what the city is doing in terms of remediating this problem. Just three months ago, we had a 460,000 gallon sewage spill that took place at Harshford Village in Northwest Tallahassee, in Northwest Leon County. I feel that we need to ask the city to work with us on developing some type of system to where we can get a better understanding of when these spills occur, what their impact's going to be for the health and the environment, and what the status is. It sounds like they've done a good job here. But when we had this spill in October, three months ago, I didn't hear much about it. And that's not a criticism of the city. That's basically me being very clear about what I see as a gap in an area that we need to address. If there's a spill that takes place in this county, whether it's in my district or Commissioner Welch's, or we should be able to know about it when it happens, and get all the details that we need, as well as the neighbors that are affected by it, to make sure that they're safe. And with that, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I'll let some of the other discussion go, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County Administrator, good update. Thank you. Commissioner Minor, you covered most of what my questions were, and I think your suggestion to have a, I will say a more robust communications and work relationship with the city on these issues to really keep us updated. They meet the state requirement. And Ms. County Administrator, if you check me on this, it seems like that has even gotten better over the last few years, or there may have been some new requirements for reporting and things like that. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, in general, and you may remember, rather, that there was an emergency order and an executive order that was put in place by the governor that required even a more explicit notification process when these things happen. However, that has expired. There is, the general law or, you know, state law does cover this explicitly in terms of the process and what the city is required to do. That doesn't mean, and the county attorney will help me on this, that doesn't mean the city can't agree to do something more than that. But whether we could compel them to do something more than that, well, that's something I need my county attorney to help on.
Of course, Madam County Attorney, if you had any comment, but we couldn't compel our colleagues of the city to do anything, correct?
That's correct. The notification process required to use is prescribed by state law. Yep.
Okay. So I had forgotten about the executive order being expired. So thank you. That was the clarification, and that may have gone back to the previous governor, correct? So Commissioner Minor, I would fully support a motion, I will leave it to you if you would like to make it, to engage our city partners and not only, I mean, and I think you said it correctly, we're not saying that they're not cleaning up these spills when they happen. But because, and when they happen in the unincorporated area, the commission, the staff should be notified before anything hits the paper, particularly if we have constituents. We don't want to hear from a constituent before we hear from the city and we have some more details. Something like that. And for my part, the only other issue that I was going to ask about was, I would like to better understand the ongoing testing. I know they have a certain scope, but particularly when these leaks happen in close proximity to something like Lake Jackson, we can do a very good job cleaning it up. We could have no issues. But I just, I want to better understand that. So I'm not sure, I'm not doing as good a job as you did, Commissioner Minor, I mean, like bullet pointing here, but I think there is something here. And I think part of that is just us understanding what the process is and engaging with the city to make sure the communication is there. And we are doing our due diligence for our community, city and county residents, even if it's above and beyond what the state requires, which we often do. And I'm sure the city would, I hope they would welcome that conversation, I'll put it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Other commissioners?
Chairman, just real quickly on point, in response to what Commissioner Dozier said, you know, and the solution toward greater communication or transparency could be as simple as opting into the FDEP's notification system, which is used right now. And so maybe that could be a very simple solution for us. I just don't know what the right answer is. And so I think what Commissioner Dozier and I have expressed, just a need for greater information coming to us when something affects the county, whether it's inside the city limits or not, I think would be very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. County Attorney, can you tell us, the reason I asked for this report tonight was, is my understanding that the lakes come under county, I know we provide for the boat docks, we do the cleaning, we go out and check on stuff. Is Lake Jackson under the jurisdiction of Leon County or the state of Florida? I thought that it was a county situation. So that's why if our property had been, received a sewage spill, and I know we don't have much of a lake there, but can you update our board as to our role engaging with Tauck, Nicosiki, Jackson, and I know Lake Ella that I was, but those other three?
Yeah, and maybe Jackson, I will tag team this, but they are the jurisdiction of the state, the lakes, and the lake bottom and the surface waters are the jurisdiction of state. Everything surrounding and leading up to them are the jurisdiction of the county when in the unincorporated area.
Okay. We don't have Lake Ella, y'all. That's not out.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Great report. We thank you for observations that are made. Commissioner Minor, we're going to start down there on that end and come on around and for commissioner comments as we prepare to land tonight's plane.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. And just again, Mr. County Administrator, thank you very much for reaching out to the city and getting that information. That's really helpful. And the fact that they're putting door hangers on people's doors in the surrounding area and notifying- and notifying them with the signage is also really, really important. Thank you. If, I know you all will recall, we had Ms. Barbara Goldstein here speaking on an agenda item about extremism and anti-Semitism and hate. If you all remember back in June of last year, this board passed a resolution based on the Anti-Defamation League's language that condemns hate and extremism. And so we're on the record being solidly in opposition to that type of hate speech, that type of behavior. But what Ms. Goldstein is talking about is, as you all, I know, have read, and, Mr. Chairman, I know you've read it too, and acted upon it already, about the rise of extremist behavior. And so one thing that Ms. Goldstein and I have talked about is trying to figure out ways to address that situation here in Leon County. And I don't want to steal her, I don't want to steal her thunder, but we're figuring, we're trying to discuss ways where we might be able to increase public awareness of it, educate people on the difference between First Amendment rights and hate speech. There's a difference, there's a line there, and help address some of the issues that we're seeing nationwide, but also very much here in Leon County. So just wanted to point that out. We've got a meeting with Rabbi Shields and Ms. Goldstein in the near future. So when Ms. Goldstein comes back at the next meeting, I think you'll hear some more concrete steps on ways that will be available to us to address. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Very, very good. Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Dozier?
Mr. Chair, remarkably, I got nothing else this evening. I know. I just wanted to see that face.
Drop the mic.
We did some good work today. Thank you all for a good meeting, and actually, okay, I am going to say this, because during this meeting, I got the approval to announce this, so I'm going to take a point of privilege here. Regional Planning Council is going to host our second annual, not annual, because there was COVID, our second industrial hemp summit. We had hundreds of people turn out in 2019. This could be, and I believe will be, a massive economic impact for our region if we get this right in the coming years. It'll be at the Civic Center, April 26th, or 27th and 28th, and we have just secured our keynote speaker, who is Mr. Jeff Whalen, Chair of the National Hemp Association. He will be in town for the conference. This is huge. It will benefit the state. Want to thank our cannabis director at F-Dax, Holly Bell, for her support. So yes, Mr. Chair, I did have one thing. This is pretty exciting and really looking forward to Mr. Whalen coming to our community. So there you go, during the meeting in real time. That's the most recent announcement.
That is excellent, and I dare not nominate any one of you singularly to be the board's representative on the hemp council. It'll be a fistfight up here. We thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Brian Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bill Proctor. I just want to thank, thanks to the county administrator, deputy county administrator for meeting with me in the interim to discuss several issues that were important to me. Thank you guys for taking the time to do that. And the only other thing I had was to tell everybody out there that Leadership Tallahassee is currently accepting applications for their 40th class. I'm a big fan of Leadership Tallahassee, I'd like to encourage everybody out there to give it a shot, even if you don't think it's for you. I promise you it is. It helps get you out of your silo and really see the community in a different way, so, and you'd be a part of Class 40, which is a pretty, pretty big deal, 40th year of Leadership Tallahassee. That's all I got, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Commissioner Carolyn Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any, anything specific, Mr. Chair, other than just concern, and I'm sure at some point our lobbyists, rather, I don't know where I said legislative delegation, but our lobbyists will perhaps report perhaps at the next meeting. I'm very concerned about some of the legislation that's passing very swiftly through the House and the Senate, the state legislature, and especially legislation affecting our school system, legislation affecting local, local control by local, by local government, Mr. Chair. So I'm hoping, Mr. County Administrator, that our next meeting, we'll get up to date on the status of that legislation.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, a well-run meeting, and I'm always amazed at how much common good we land on together, and even though our opinions and votes may differ, I believe that they are normally focused on making a better life for the residents of Leon County and Tallahassee. I do have an exclusive as well. Commissioner Dozier, I would not let you have one all by yourself, but on February the 19th, my five-year-old granddaughter will turn six, and if I did not do a shout out to her for her happy birthday, she would be very disappointed. So happy birthday, Addison James. And then secondly, you guys have a great Valentine's Day, and I look forward to the work we have ahead of us. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman, thank you. Commissioner Jackson?
Great, great meeting tonight, Mr. Chair. I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioners, I have a request coming to us for all the Soul, Soul of the South, they're seeking a financial contribution and sponsorship for their event that will be hosted this year in May, and I would like, if there's no objection, to pass this on to the administrator, that it might be agenda for our consideration and support. So, it's been motioned, and secondly, is there a discussion on our agendaing support for the Soul of the South Festival? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. That passes unanimously. I want to thank you again tonight for all the support that has occurred for things traditional and things not traditional. And tonight, I'm very, very pleased that we have adopted our support for the sheriff's initiative to bring forth a commission on men and boys for our community. That is an astounding historic unfolding that has happened right in front of our very faces. A sheriff who's an actor dimension in real time and has sought our support, and we know it's not the end of it, but we're grateful. Secondly, I would like to invite you commissioners, as well as the public, to a meeting of the Public Safety Coordinating Council, which you've allowed me to chair for some few minutes. And at this meeting, our state attorney and our public defender has agreed, and sent letters to me, to our discussion for ways in which we can reduce the jail time of persons who are in Leon County's jail, of which we fund. There are 482 people in our jail, according to the paper Mr. Edders wrote, who've been in jail for over six months. There are 272 people who've been in our jail for over a year. There are 117 people who have been in our jail for over two years. There are 42 people in our jail who have been there for over three years. And we have 14 people in the Leon County jail who have been there for over four years. As chairperson of the Public Safety Coordinating Council, which you all endorse and allow me to serve on, our task by state statute is to reduce jail population, detention population. And prior to COVID, the average time was in the 130s, that's in one state. We have slipped now to 262 days, in which is the average time. And notwithstanding that average time, we still have 272 people who've been there over a year, 117 over two years, and we have 42 over three, 14 over four. And I feel that for the monies that we invest at $100 a night, it's very important that we get a handle. And so this is why I have addressed the state attorney, the public defender, who are the movers and shakers of that process. And in the Public Safety Coordinating Council, we have the sheriff, the police chief, the state attorney, public defender, Judge Akins, county judge, we have now Judge, Circuit Judge, you have a county commissioner, you have a court administrator, all these players in the criminal justice system. And I believe that if we have a great sit-down to examine, and what I'm suggesting is that even after that meeting, there may well need to be a study from a professional, because the nature of the work of a state attorney and public defender, sometimes there's not agreement. But I believe, and I'm suggesting early to you, we may need a consultant to review our processes, to see how this kind of languishing of human lives is occurring. And it's a first start. Later, when you receive notification, because all of us come to that meeting, it'll be in the sunshine. But we have to, we have to examine these numbers, and I'm hopeful that your interest and tonight, we suggested paying $70,000 as our share to support the sheriff's initiative. But justice delayed is justice denied, and I hope that you will walk with me on that point, because it's clear that we really need a consultant to help us in this regard. And then I support tonight, Commissioner Minor's comments about activities, and you saw the letter that I sent to our governor, asking our governor for an executive order denouncing and even prohibiting paramilitary training in the state capital of Florida. And you saw the reasons that I outlined, and hopefully we can, hopefully we can, something good will come out of that. And then the final, final tonight, which my notes are a little scattered, I want to wish Vince Long his 79th birthday is coming up, and Vince Long is, he's going to live a long time with the name right long, you know?
That means it's going to be your birthday, too.
Huh?
Same day.
Oh, my God.
Says a lot.
Let's leave that alone. Okay. I can't find my other notes, but Mr. Minister, I want to share this right here with you. I want to thank everybody tonight. You're the best. And there are two people in this building tonight that, these sisters right here, who take our minutes, log, and you hear them, I mean, they are busy the whole night. I want to thank y'all for all that you do, and we appreciate you. When I look at the minutes and when we go back through what you said that we said, we rarely see margins of difference that we have to correct and mention those things. So we thank you for your constant steadfast work. Those things being said, Mr. Vice Chairman, I feel gravity pulling my hand down, gravity is holding. We got it here.